Good evening colleagues, welcome. Good evening everyone else, welcome to this council meeting. Members will have found some literature about one of the two charities that I've been supporting during this mayoral year. I hope you don't mind it being there. What I would welcome you doing, if you are able to, is to help the Action Foundation charity. And for any of you who are able tonight to put a donation in the envelope with the leaflets, would you put those envelopes either in the appropriate box outside this council chamber or just leave your envelope on the seat and it will be collected later? Thank you very much. Standalone microphones will be used at this meeting and for all future meetings. Can I ask that members to move to the microphones at the appropriate time? And please do not speak from your seats as you cannot be heard by everyone. This has happened a few times in previous meetings. As members are aware, tonight we'll be trialling a new voting system. Go voting, e-voting. From your personal devices and you should now all be logged on to the system. The test will only be used once before item seven. Then we will revert to the manual system for the rest of the meeting. Our digital team would be grateful for all feedback from members after the meeting. Thank you. Can we have apologies for absence please?
Thank you Lord Mayor. We've had apologies from councillors Allison Forbes, Gallagher, Paul, Keating, McGinnis, Jackie Robinson and Bright.
Okay, thank you. Minutes of the last meeting, does the council agree the minutes of the meeting held on the 6th of March 2019? Thank you. Official announcement. On behalf of the city and the council, I offer our deepest condolences to the people of New Zealand after the horrifying terrorist attack in Christchurch last month. Our thoughts are still with all of those affected by the sickening act of violence. And may I add that on behalf of the city, I was able to attend the vigil that was held in St Nicholas Cathedral three days after the attack. As this is the last business meeting of the city council before the local elections of the 2nd of May, can I take the opportunity to thank all members for their service during this past year and over recent years? Especially those members who are standing down next month. Thank you. Correspondents? Does council agree to receive correspondence from the Parliamentary Undersecretary of State for Justice and the Minister of State for Immigration? Was that agreed? Yes, thank you. We have one large petition this month. Sorry. Does council agree that move? Can I just ask, was there anyone to second councillor Woodock, councillor Taylor? Okay, thank you. Then it's not agreed, so could we move to a vote then please on whether this item can be moved forward? I'm afraid, sorry, I'm afraid that's not been agreed, so we will stay in the order of business as printed, thank you. Petitions, item number five. We have one large petition this month regarding climate change. As this petition has more than 2,500 signatures, this will be subject to debate. Can I call now on Tamar Pittman to present the petition please?
Good evening Lord Mayor and councillors. Since the UN's Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change has stark warning last autumn, we now have just 11 years left in which to limit climate change or face catastrophic consequences. A swathe of local authorities around the country have already declared climate and ecological emergencies and set necessarily ambitious plans for carbon reduction. Our neighbouring cities of Durham, York, Leeds, Carlisle, Edinburgh and Sunderland have done so. More than half of the other UK core cities have. Newcastle Council has not. On the contrary, in January I stood here and asked councillor Kemp what progress the city council had made towards its own target set in 2010. The answer I received was extremely disappointing. While the reduction in carbon emissions had been achieved, it was because of national changes to energy production rather than through local actions. It also transpired that the council felt no need to monitor its progress towards its mayor's ADAP commitments either due to uncertainties surrounding Brexit. Newcastle Green Party were concerned to learn the council haven't been taking the threat of climate change seriously as it feels it's doing enough already. We disagree strongly. One of our members was so concerned she started the petition which I present to you today. It's clear that we're not the only people concerned about the climate crisis. In the short space of time, the petition amassed almost 3,000 signatures from people in Newcastle who are worried for their futures and for those of their children. All of these people are calling upon you, their elected leaders, to declare a climate emergency and take the action that's urgently needed. The critical action needed is fourfold and I'll explain to you now why each is crucial. First, we ask you to publicly report progress on the 2010 declaration of climate change, the climate action plan, the 2014 mayors' ADAP commitments within six months. This is necessary to establish a current baseline and for proper democratic accountability. We cannot afford to waste another decade of inaction. Second, the council must update the climate action plan in the next six months so as to commit to make the city climate neutral before 2030. The severity and scientific understanding of the climate emergency has advanced since the action plan was written in 2010. Because of previous governmental failures to act, the target of carbon neutrality by 2050 is no longer sufficient for the urgency of the crisis. Third, to achieve climate neutrality by 2030, specific targets must be set to reduce carbon emissions in housing, transport, domestic waste and council buildings and to report progress on this annually. Carbon reduction implications must feature at the heart of all policy decision making. Without this, the council is in danger of yet more perverse decision making as has been the case with several recent decisions where their actions betray their words. For example, at the last council meeting, this council failed to properly debate its development and allocations plan which had failed to incorporate best practice advice from the Town and Country Planning Association on planning for a low-carbon future. It earmarked land for new coal mining at a time when fossil fuels belong firmly in the ground. The council continues to support the Alive After Five concession encouraging people into the city centre by car rather than by public transport. Some of the proposed pedestrian and cycle infrastructure plans for which funding had already been earmarked have been shelved. And the council's new tree strategy has proved to be embarrassingly unambitious. It's no wonder the city breaches air pollution safety limits as well as missing these vital opportunities to cut carbon. Fourth, we ask that the council investment in fossil fuels is ended in the next three years and that the council call for staff pension fund divestment too. Recent news stories have revealed how the fossil fuel industry lobby and block effective governmental climate action only by cutting investment in such companies and thus disempowering them can our democracy effectively tackle the climate emergency. We hope that these four actions, annual reporting, specific targets with carbon reduction at the heart of decisions, divestment and a 2030 target for climate, not simply carbon neutrality, will be added to councillor Taylor's motion on your agenda this evening. Without putting climate at the heart of everything it does, how can the city council expect to achieve the necessary reductions if it's a business as usual scenario? The Labour Party nationally are publicising the Green New Deal and motioning for a national climate emergency, yet at the same time supporting road building, fracking, airport expansion and prioritising growth. Worse still, Newcastle's Labour councillors have been ignoring the council's own targets and meanwhile supporting fossil fuels, expanding roads, failing on public transport, felling trees and tarmac-ing over green belts to build energy inefficient housing which weds communities to their cars. With a commitment to maximise growth rather than to tackling climate change as a priority, it's clear the city council needs to be held to account. Words will not save us from this impending climate crisis but actions will. Declare a climate emergency, commit to achieve climate neutrality by 2030 and prove that the city council takes the climate crisis as seriously as it ought to.
Thank you Ms Pittman. Can I call on councillor Kemp to respond please? Thank you.
Thank you for the petition. The issue at the heart of tonight's council meeting is climate change. I fundamentally disagree with the Newcastle Green Party that we have not taken this matter seriously. We have never claimed we are doing enough, this is simply not the case. We have one planet and we all have a responsibility to ensure that we all do what we can to protect it for this and future generations. And as the city council, we take this responsibility very seriously. We are committed to protecting the environment and promoting sustainability. We will raise the profile of climate change challenges over the coming year and we will lead a series of initiatives to encourage people to take greater care of our planet. So as Cabinet Member for Environment, I'm proud to say this Newcastle Labour administration tonight declares a climate emergency and this is embedded in our manifesto. Let us also note the work already undertaken as it is clear from the petition that this work is not known or understood. We have already eliminated single-use plastics from council buildings and we have led the way in encouraging a significant number of businesses to reduce or eliminate such plastics from their day-to-day business. In addition, we've recently announced our 40-year partnership with ONGI to build new district heating schemes in the city. The council's development allocation plan is in line with national policy and will be the subject of future public scrutiny through the normal planning procedures. We continue to improve the electric vehicle charging infrastructure across the city including deploying rapid chargers. We've made good progress with deploying solar panels across a number of different types of buildings. We've installed lower energy lighting in many of our public buildings. We've developed support services for commercial businesses to help further their efforts towards energy efficiency. We've secured income to strengthen our programmes of support and advice to the most vulnerable in the city and continue to help residents secure the best energy deal. We're exploring further options for deep retrofit and improving the use of digital technology to further the smart energy agenda. We have also signed up the government's Public Sector Emissions Reduction pledge and we continue to work in a partnership with a wide range of networks and organisations. Newcastle has established plans and targets for our city to do its part in tackling climate change. We've already moved to ban fracking in our local authority area and our current climate change plan commits the city to achieving a 50% reduction in carbon emissions on 2005 levels by 2030. I'm pleased to advise that this city council now commits itself to a revised plan setting a new target of making Newcastle carbon neutral by 2030 and this commitment is central to our local manifesto. The documents supporting this will replace those of the council's existing commitments and will be made public in due course. Although the city council has a leadership role to play on environmental sustainability and climate change, real action will be delivered by people. This means we have to persuade our citizens of the need to change and encourage businesses to prioritise this despite potential additional costs. We will therefore establish a climate change convention bringing together businesses, residents, academics and public representatives to agree a citywide plan of behaviour change and action. This convention is our chance to come together as a city and make a real difference. The revised documents supporting our new strategy will, once they have been through public scrutiny as part of the cabinet and council process, be used to support this convention and act as a starting point for debate. We will work with the convention to lobby central government for funding to assist us in achieving these challenging targets and look to the North Atine Combined Authority to align with this programme. In recent months, we have seen young people coming together to demand change. We stand with them, we are entering a climate change emergency. We believe that further radical action is needed now to show leadership on this issue. I note the petition and council will be aware we are already set to discuss calling a climate change emergency. Thank you.
Are you proposing to include that petition did you say? There's a motion that you are...
No, I have noted the petition and advised that we were having the discussion during the debate.
Okay. Thank you councillor Kemp. Is there a secondaire supporting that noting of councillor Kemp? Thank you.
Councillor Dunn formally seconding councillor Kemp's response to the petition.
Thank you. Is that note seconded? Is that... We now have opportunity for two people to speak and I would like to call on councillor Taylor first to speak to the petition and the response by the cabinet member. Thank you.
Thank you Lord Mayor. I'd firstly like to point out that it's the Liberal Democrats that brought the motion declaring a climate emergency and it wouldn't have happened tonight had we not done so. And obviously the Labour Group take it so seriously that they refuse to bring forward the debate so that the people in the gallery could hear the debate, knowing perfectly well that with the length of the agenda we have, it's very unlikely that we'll ever get to a debate tonight. We have already put forward a motion declaring, in which we want to declare a climate emergency to update the 2010 Newcastle Declaration on Climate Change that I brought to this council that the year, pledging to make Newcastle carbon neutral by 2030. We are calling on Westminster to provide powers and resources to make the 2030 target possible and to work with others to achieve that. And we have asked for the cabinet to bring back a report within six months. I note in the amendment that's been changed to as soon as possible, yet another target removed. Lord Mayor, in February, 2,000 of schoolchildren and young people walked out of classes to join a UK-wide climate change strike amid growing anger at the failure of politicians to tackle this escalating ecological crisis. Organisers said that more than 10,000 young people in at least 60 towns and cities from the Scottish Highlands to Cornwall joined the strike. The site of the youth strike for climate is testament to the passion and awareness among young people that we need to fight for a future that simply doesn't exist because they feel they've been betrayed by the inaction of those in positions of power. In the past, Newcastle City Council made a strong commitment to tackling climate change, signing the Nottingham Declaration on Climate Change in 2006 and publishing the Climate Change Strategy and Action Plan in 2008. This strategy outlined how the council had worked towards tackling greenhouse gases and due to the actions we were taking, Newcastle was declared the most sustainable city in the UK two years running. The council also commissioned research published in 2010 looking at the attitudes of Newcastle residents towards climate change. Nearly 80% thought the city council should be tackling climate change and the majority of residents were already taking actions such as double glazing, low energy lights and switching off appliances. So even nine years ago, Newcastle residents were open to making the changes we need. As I said, we brought forward the Newcastle Declaration on Climate Change in 2010. Unfortunately, very few of the actions and targets in the declaration have been achieved. The percentage of household waste recycling hasn't increased since 2010, the percentage of waste composted hasn't increased since 2011. The recent waste strategy may have had good words but there were no targets. In March 2016, there was a report to Cabinet on a 100% clean energy city, an excellent report full of good ideas but again, almost nothing seems to have happened since. In that report, it said that it was envisaged that a refreshed climate change strategy will be brought to Cabinet in early 2017 for approval of the detailed roadmap to achieving the 100% clean target. Whatever happened to that? It didn't happen. And do we even still have a Sustainability and Climate Change Group that was supposed to monitor the targets? Lord Mayor, this council has not done enough in the last eight years. It's great to hear what councillor Kemp says that they are actually going to take some action but it's too little, too late, we really need to get on with this.
Councillor Stone, I understand that you wish to speak as well, is that correct? Okay, thank you. Councillor Kemp, would you like to respond to that?
Well firstly to applaud councillor Taylor on ignoring the change in the agenda item and bringing her speech from the motion forward to the petition. I think it's very easy to stand and make the comments you do councillor Taylor without actually recognising that we have actually just made a statement which is about the climate change emergency. Absolutely no recognition of that whatsoever because unfortunately, you wanted to claim it for yourself. This doesn't belong to any one party or any group of individuals. It's a societal issue and it's something that we worked through, we brought it forward into our manifesto and addressed it tonight in due process. Also, the calling of a convention is actually something a little bit more evolved and developed than you were proposing. We don't believe for one second that this challenge can be addressed purely and simply by the city council. I've outlined a number of initiatives that we've taken but they are all small steps and this is a huge societal challenge for everyone. The convention I believe is something that could be groundbreaking, it is all encompassing and it is an open forum where we will welcome expert guidance and views from all who have a shared interest in addressing this challenge. So it would be pleasing if actually there would be a point of commitment from the party opposite to actually recognise positive steps taken by this Labour administration in committing alongside numerous other city councils across the country for a climate change emergency rather than being thinking, "Oh dear, my little focus has just been underwritten." Pathetic, it's bigger issue than your little focus newsletter.
Councillor Kemp, will you please stick to the point? Thank you. Does council agree to note the petition? Okay, thank you. Item number six, public questions and addresses. There are three public questions to council this evening. Firstly, can I call on Amir Ahmed to ask a question regarding taxis at Newcastle Airport?
Thank you Lord Mayor. Good evening and councillors. Newcastle Airport has decided to close its long-established taxi rank and replace taxis with private hire cars. This exclusion of taxis is apparent at some regional airports but it's not inevitable. Manchester Airport for instance is maintaining a taxi rank. And it's also likely that the decision made by Newcastle Airport is in breach of its own rules and regulations for providing a taxi service at the airport. This needs to be investigated. The Newcastle Airport decision will mean that 129 taxi drivers from various councils will lose their livelihoods. It will deprive passengers from choice in meeting their transport needs as well causing inconvenience for the travelling public, especially for those with disabilities and will probably increase passengers' fares. It's also the case that the airport decision will be de-skilled, the workforce as the private hire option does away with their standards and training required of taxi drivers. This is all about increasing the airport's profits at the expense of skilled jobs and higher charges of passengers. The city council is a shareholder in the airport. I would like to ask if the council supported the decision to remove taxis and will the city council use the influence with the airport board to insist on the right of passengers to choose their form of transport by continuing with a taxi rank available to hackney carriage drivers? And will the leader of council meet with members of the Newcastle Airport Taxi Drivers' Association to discuss the issues that raise out of the airport decision? On a final note, I would like to draw everyone's attention to one last word, airport taxi drivers are still working and providing a full service to the public and to the airport in the hope that this matter will be resolved amicably by airport management and council. Thank you very much.
Thank you Mr Ahmed. Councillor Kemp, would you please respond?
Thank you Mr Ahmed for bringing this to the attention of the council. I appreciate the concern members of the Airport Taxi Drivers' Association have in this area but I feel it's important to make clear that the decision was one taken by the airport as an entirely separate entity to the council. Seven North East councils do as you say, hold shares in the airport but the airport does not consult the councils on any day-to-day decisions. The board is simply there as a strategic body. Following emails from members of the association, officers at the council have contacted the airport and requested information around replacement operations. And as I have made clear in emails to drivers and members, the airport replied that the contract was put out to tender by the airport six months ago and an alternative firm won the contract and are now recruiting to roles. The council as a licensing authority has no power to decide taxi access rights on private land. However, I am happy for officers to continue to raise the concerns of drivers and also suggest that this might be an item to be raised at the first taxi drivers' forum. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kemp. Mr Ahmed, would you like to respond? You have up to a minute to... Okay, thank you. Thank you councillor Kemp. I now call on Sulhakar Yusaf to answer, I also ask a question regarding taxis at Newcastle Airport.
Good evening Lord Mayor, leader of the council, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, general members of the public. Thank you for giving me this opportunity today. My question to the council is, will Newcastle Council ask Newcastle International Airport Board of Directors to allow Newcastle City Council to appoint a hackney carriage taxi rank at the airport? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Yusaf. Councillor Kemp?
Thank you, Mr Yusaf, and thank you for your question. As my previous answer, whilst the council can make the airport aware of your concerns, it has no powers to overturn this decision. And while the council cannot force the airport to create a hackney rank, I'm more than happy for myself and officers to work with you on what measures we can to take forward to support you. And I will ask officers to look at the issue and write to you and look at making progress.
I'd like to respond to that, Councillor Kemp. Newcastle International Airport has had a taxi rank for 52 years. We are not taxi drivers, we are ambassadors. We are people travelling from all over the world that come to Newcastle upon Tyne, who invest money and business in the North East. We are ambassadors for Newcastle, we are the first point of call. The other item I'd like to say is that because we're the ambassadors, our fleet of vehicles, 35% of our fleet are wheelchair accessible. The tender document that went out was for a taxi service, not a private hire service. It was a contradiction of the airport bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Yusaf. Thank you, Councillor Kemp.
All right, I've got the next question as well.
I now call on Judith Campbell to address council on the subject of climate change.
Thank you, Lord Mayor and councillors, for hearing me tonight. My name is Judith Campbell and I live in Throckley on the westernmost boundary of the city. I was born in Throckley 60 years ago. As you are probably aware, Throckley sits in an area rich in mining heritage. Indeed, I grew up surrounded by pit heaps in Throckley, Leamington and Westerhope. I also remember the air pollution from local industry. Throckley Brickworks, owned by the National Coal Board throughout my childhood, used coal for energy. The chimneys at Stella North Power Station belched out smoke continuously. And along the road, I recall the dirt generated from the graphite at Anglo Great Lakes. When I was young, Throckley was a major transport route from east to west with the old A69 running straight through the middle of the village on Hexham Road. I remember how unsafe it was walking to school with lorries thundering past continuously. As children, we sought refuge from all of this, playing in Throckley Dean, an oasis of green and all the grime, although I do remember that Julie Byrne, which runs through the dean, was not the cleanest of streams to paddle in. We used to get really excited to see wild rabbits and hedgehogs but I can't recall ever seeing squirrels. The pit heaps disappeared many years ago and the dirty industries are long consigned to memory in the history books. Throckley Brickworks remains but was modernised with the introduction of a tunnel kiln way back in 1965, no longer reliant on coal power. Thankfully, the heavy traffic ultimately bypassed the middle of the village with the development of the new A69 in 1971, although it's still close by. I have continued to live in the area all my life and have been lucky to bring up my children in the same location but also in a significantly cleaner, less polluted environment. The Julie Byrne now runs crystal clear and the range and scope of wildlife is much more extensive with red squirrels, bats, owls, roe deer and otters. What was once an area rich in mining heritage is now an area rich in wildlife and cleaner air. So why am I telling you this? What my story and the stories of those in Throckley and its neighbouring villages illustrates is that things can change and the impacts of that change can be profound. I've watched the transformation of our once blackened spaces into areas where bountiful nature can be seen and enjoyed in all its glory. Fighting climate change is often thought about in global terms and yet locally we gain. We get cleaner air for our children to breathe, we reduce environmentally induced health problems, we experience an enhanced quality of life. Turning the clock back should no longer be an option. Instead, we're asking you to be leaders of progress, leaders who commit to stand against unclean energy production and consumption while doing all in your power to promote renewable alternatives. A climate catastrophe is looming. I and the people of Throckley plead with you to act.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing this, Mrs Campbell. The council takes its responsibilities for protecting our natural environment and the health of our residents extremely seriously. There is a strong environmental driver running through our development plans which promote the protection enhancement of the green infrastructure network and natural environment across the city. Amongst these is the biodiversity action plan, which ensures our wildlife are a consideration in planning decisions. The BAP sets out the priority habitats and priority species which must be protected and supported. Monitoring takes place through the annual monitoring review and further targets will be developed. I would like to reassure you that all planning applications are assessed against national and local planning policy, including a detailed assessment of the impact of any development on the natural environment. However, it would be inappropriate for me to comment on any specific live planning application. Alongside our planning role sits our commitment to fighting climate change and I've already explained our latest steps and actions in response to the petition previously. We have already adopted this as part of a challenging pragmatic programme up to 2030 which would have delivered a 50% reduction by 2030 from our 2005 baseline. Tonight, we will discuss further the issues that you've addressed.
Thank you, Councillor Kemp. Do you wish to respond, Miss Campbell?
Yes, I would just say that likewise I am mindful that I can't discuss a live planning application but I do believe that mining belongs in the past, we've got no place for it in Throckley.
Before we move on to the next item of business, we are now going to trial the Go Vote system, which has also been tested at Planning Committee. You will be asked to respond to two votes on no specific question. The digital team are particularly keen to understand your experience of using the system and any errors or difficulties encountered. When the vote is opened, you can choose to respond with whichever option you want, yes, no or abstain. You should see that your seat location on the screen changes colour to correspond with your vote. You can also try changing your vote. We will then close that vote and repeat the exercise. There are a number of staff in the chamber, please raise your hand if you need any help. Please now get to your device that you're using to vote and begin your first vote. If the vote does not appear at any point, you may need to press refresh. Okay, colleagues, we'll close that first opportunity for you to move around on the different buttons there. Remember, if you're having any problems, please raise your hand. Okay, we're closing the vote now. Things will be wiped off now, thank you. And as I said at the beginning of the meeting, if you want to or feel you want to let the staff know how you feel things went and do be in touch with them and let them know. We move now then on to item number seven, the Newcastle Fair Trade Partnership, Fair Trade City Status Renewal. May I call on councillor McCarthy to move the report and seconded by councillor Todd. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I'm really pleased to bring this report to council tonight for us to once again re-assert our commitment to fair trade. As most of us will know in this council chamber, fair trade is a social movement whose goal is to make sure that producers in developing countries have the best training conditions possible. It's about social justice and it fits well with other items on tonight's agenda in relation to social and economic rights. Fair trade does cover environmental issues, labour costs and development standards. And I do ask, why is it that we would still have to continue to declare our support for fair trade? We all know, I would guess, Lord Mayor, that fair trade work reduces poverty, encourages the very best environmental friendly standards and methods of production and safeguards humane working conditions. Some of us in the city some years ago met with some cocoa farmers from Africa. They came here as part of a commitment for fair trade fortnight and actually they would leave a really lasting impact on those of us who met them. It wasn't just about giving them a decent salary and improving their working conditions, it was actually about the opportunities that being involved in the fair trade movement gave to their village. It provided water for the families who lived in their village and they had a community centre, a place to gather and share and it meant that actually they were really, really proud of the work that they had done and their community. I can't explain really how proud those farmers were. So I think tonight is again our opportunity as a council to reiterate our support, recognise there's still more to do, there is still far too much poverty in this world and we need to do our bit to address that. We also know that we cannot make this commitment on fair trade on our own, it is a partnership that we work in. So both universities are involved in this, the faith communities, other members of the wider community are involved in the work to promote fair trade and I think it's our responsibility to make sure the wider community engages in this. Lord Mayor, tonight we're agreeing to renew our fair trade status and receive the action plan that is before us. I'm very happy to move this report, thank you.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Councillor Todd?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm seconding the reporter's chair of the Newcastle Fair Trade Partnership, which was brought into existence by one of your predecessors, councillor John Marshall, when he was Lord Mayor and is a lasting legacy of his. Fair trade is in hard times in terms of the survival of fair trade partnerships. Numbers of them have disappeared in the North East, we may actually be the only one left in the region, which is very sad. That's because of austerity, council cuts and so on. But although some of the formal structures around fair trade are no longer here at the regional level, the enthusiasm still persists and is really quite vibrant. Councillor McCarthy has mentioned some of the partners. I wouldn't want to single anyone out for particular attention but I think we should mention Newcastle University who have been messianic in their catering operation at promoting fair trade and colleagues at Northumbria University have been very supportive as well. And I'd like to also thank Louise Reeve, one of our policy officers, for really fashioning with the partnership an achievable forward plan that we can do in order to build up the partnership again and establish some further commitments to fair trade. Anybody wants to join the partnership, both here or in the gallery or out in the wider public, they're very welcome to get in touch and take part in our discussions and planning and hopefully activities in the future. Broadly speaking, fair trade is still very important in Britain. Britain is still one of the world leaders in terms of having a fair trade market, something like 1.6 billion pounds a year of value in fair trade products is bought by British consumers and that adds at least 30 million pounds in the fair trade premium that councillor McCarthy has mentioned that goes directly to the producers of food or other items. Ought to say really that there is a worry about the future of fair trade in numbers of supermarket chains and chocolate brands particularly have been moving away from fair trade designation. The Co-op and some others are really firmly behind the whole exercise still but I think we ought to just point out that in the past couple of years both Tesco and Sainsbury's have attempted to engage in what can only be called a form of neo-colonial economic imperialism by trying to deny farmers, particularly in Africa, access to the fair trade premium and the fair trade relationship and dressing the relationship up in a different form which labels the buyer, in this case two major British supermarket chains, control over the fair trade premium. So the producers have to come begging to those supermarket chains for money to do basic things like improving local water supply, buying shoes for the children, opening and running schools, providing healthcare, which are best determined and controlled in the hands of the cooperatives that make up the producers. I'll sort of end on that point but I think there is an issue there. We should remember that shopping isn't just putting things in the basket, often with dreary music droning into your head in the supermarket background. It is a political act and where we have major British supermarkets engaging in what amounts really to a form of economic theft of some of the produce of some of the poorest people in the world, we need to raise our voices as shoppers and in other ways. people in the world, we need to raise our voices as shoppers and in other ways. So thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Todd. Councillor Nita Noah, do you wish to speak on the report? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd just like to say how pleased I am that we are still endorsing fair trade in this city. It has gone on a long time, and I was there at the beginning with John Marshall, and there was an awful lot of good being done. I think we also need to acknowledge the number of volunteers who make it possible across the city. And just for your knowledge, Nigel, there is quite active fair trade branches across the region, including places like Stockton. The only thing that bothers me about this is, we're hearing a lot at the moment about how we should be staying local and spending our money in the Loewian and not going outside. This is a death knell for fair trade. I'm glad that we're still talking about helping the Third World and bringing their products to our shelves, we could do with more of it, and I do think that we need to say thank you to the university especially, who've always taken this on with an enthusiasm that's beyond belief sometimes. And I'm glad that we're going to go ahead and keep going with this, Lord Mayor, thank you.
Thank you councillor Noah. Councillor McCarthy, do you wish to respond to the... No. Okay. Does councillor agree the recommendations set out in the report?
Agree.
Thank you. We move on to cabinet members' reports, item number eight. The first cabinet member update is on employment. Can I call on councillor Bell to introduce his portfolio report? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My report this year covers the work of the employment portfolio, which concentrates on ensuring we as a council create the best possible opportunities for our residents in terms of good quality jobs, whilst creating a modern 21st century vibrant city for them to live in. As we're all aware, we continue to face unprecedented times with the uncertainty of Brexit at the forefront of our minds. I hope however, that the steps we are taking to create jobs and the right environment to attract business, secure an investment, increase in income streams and modernising the city skyline, will help protect us from the damage Brexit may cause. Early discussions with developers provide an opportunity to discuss and influence standards of employment. The council has no enforcement powers, but as a good employer itself, we can expect others to follow its leads. Where the council has contract arrangements, there is potential to include labour closures. 4,400 more residents are employed compared to a year ago. Where there are inward investment opportunities, discussions will take place on apprenticeships and jobs. Where possible, the council will seek to drive quality jobs, not just the quantity. We would not have achieved this level of success on our own, we have had to be more innovative in the way that we work, develop robust partnership arrangements and use external funding and prudent investment to maximise positive outcomes for our communities. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank all staff who have contributed to this success for their excellent work over the past year. Without their hard work, commitment and expertise, the progress we have seen would not have been possible. My report sets out in detail the great progress we have made over the last year. However, I'd like to take this opportunity to highlight some of the developments I'm particularly proud of, and also cover some of the updates since the report was written. Planning for the longer term, transformation of the city centre retail core is continuing. The Village Green on Northumberland Street and the Family Fun Weekends not only proved particularly popular, but also helped us gather valuable data which will be used to inform how the area will look in the future. The development of Bank of England site is progressing with the planned application now in, with a proposed start site in the autumn. The business cases report the second phase of investment at the central gateway has been tabled with the North East LEP. Newcastle Helix has made great progress this year, the most recent success being the Biosphere, which opened at the end of last year. Occupancy rates are well ahead of target, and the building is expected to create excess of 250 jobs. The two legal and general buildings now under construction will accommodate 2,000 jobs. The opening of Newcastle's Eagles Community Arena has been a great success, offering fantastic services to the community as well as the team. Unemployment remains at a lower level, and the city has many initiatives in place to attract businesses in the area and support our residents into work. Four projects have now been established through the community-led local development programme, with others in the pipeline. The funding process has recently been altered to make it more streamlined. New high-quality student accommodation is still in demand in the city centre. All purpose-built accommodation is now assessed against a supplementary plan document which requires that the accommodation is flexible and can be adapted to other forms of residential layout. Newcastle University has agreed terms to purchase the old general hospital site from the hospital trust. A master plan will need to be submitted for the 28-acre site, and public consultation will need to take place. We're working with the university to support this master plan approach. A new school in Denton Village has opened, in addition to a new city centre hotel and the UTC, all of which has been facilitated by staff across the council. The traditional high street is changing, and SMEs have an important and integral part to play in creating a vibrant city. The recent stack development, although criticised for being short-term, has created an affordable city centre opportunity for SMEs. We also offer a range of assistance SMEs, including that provided by the Business Intellectual Property Centre based at the city library. To put this in perspective, in the last year, 420 one-to-one business startup sessions were delivered, with over 1,200 SMEs and startups attending events and the workshops organised at the business centre. The availability of good quality housing is an important factor in attracting investment and jobs to the city. Housing mix is also important for the viability of our new housing developments alongside the infrastructure of schools, where we released through the 106 contributions. Of the 1,000 new homes per year, over 16% have been of social affordable housing. These are just some of the achievements over the past 12 months, there are many more contained in the report. I'd also like to take the opportunity to report to very briefly outline some of the work planned for the forthcoming year, and I ask you to take a moment to look through some of the significant developments you can see and expect. I'd also like to take this opportunity to update council on some of the developments since the report was written. Our attendance at Minton this year has proved to be a great success. One of the highlights was the opportunity to give us the launch of prospective for a joint venture partner for the delivery of the next phase of the Stephenson quarter. This 200 million pound development will see new homes, offices and leisure space providing 2,000 new jobs and around 200 million pound per annum in the local economy. Also to note that since the report was drafted, more jobs have been created and safeguarded. In the year to the end of February, inward investment projects have supported 629 new jobs and safeguarded an additional 305. The jobs have been in the creative, digital, retail, leisure, hospitality, professional business sectors. Thank you for the time, Lord Mayor, it has been a really busy year, but I think it's a worthwhile year for the residents of Newcastle and for the visitors to this great city. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell. Could I just ask please for councillor Lambert to... He's indicated to wish to speak, thank you. And could it be followed by councillor Ashby, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, can I thank Jed for presenting a fairly systematic, thorough, detailed report. Clearly, the highlights of Jed's portfolio is helping to reduce unemployment in this city and creating significant employment opportunities for those who haven't got jobs or training. Jed's absolutely correct in highlighting the numbers...
Councillor Lambert, can I ask you, it's a question that you have...
I am, I'm going to come onto the question, I'm just setting it...
If you bear in mind the pressure of the evening.
I'm setting it in the appropriate context, Lord Mayor. My question is, is that clearly some groups, for example the over 50s, do experience barriers in accessing these employment opportunities. What steps is the city council taking in conjunction with other agencies such as the business community and the combined authority to get the over 50s, especially those living in deindustrialised areas, back into meaningful jobs and training? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lambert. After councillor Ashby has spoken, I would ask councillor Higgins to be ready to speak, please, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Bell for the report which I enjoyed reading, and I enjoyed reading about the successes therein, and I'd also like to join in. Thanks for all the officer effort over the year and into that report, and I hope that we haven't lost too much key resource to the North of Tyne combined authority in this area. I'd endorse his comments about the impact of Brexit on the city...
Councillor Ashby, could you please ask your question, so we can move on?
Yes. Does he agree with me that there only seems to be two options for the first remain city, bad and worse, and that while the MPs for Newcastle seem to be fighting on our behalf, other Labour MPs regionally have been voting to prop up this rotten Tory deal? And would he also like to comment further on the 40 million pounds in European investment over the last four years, and I join fears of the future without access to such funds and the uncertainties that we currently face on this? He refers to MIPIM and the city's presence there. I welcome his comments on any member attendance, costs and benefits, and in particular request more detailed report to be made available to all members assessing the impact of attendance and value for money over the last few years. I'd also welcome a more detailed report and undertaking that the costs and benefits of the multimillion pounds civic centre refurbishment programme would give a proper rate of return on the council taxpayers' risks and investments within my lifetime. I was unable to be at the January council meeting...
Councillor Ashby, thank you very much, I think we must draw that to a close, thank you very much.
By point of order, please, Lord Mayor, I was unable to be at the January council meeting, but understand councillor Bell said that the occupancy rate at the Granger Market was 93 to 96%. A visit this afternoon indicated this is a large overestimate, and would he take an early opportunity to correct the record?
Thank you councillor Ashby. After councillor Higgins has spoken, could I call on councillor Stone to ask a question, please?
You'll be relieved to know, Lord Mayor, that my question is rather more concise than the previous offering. I just want to comment on councillor Bell's very positive report about investment into the city, which I think is very encouraging, and my question relates to the part played by the voluntary sector, wonderful voluntary sector that we have, in attracting that investment. So my question is as follows. I note the role played by the voluntary sector in attracting significant investment totaling half a million pounds of European funding into the city, and I'm particularly delighted at the award of Europe ESF funding to Scotswood Community Garden in my own ward. It's a wonderful permaculture and wildlife project, Lord Mayor, which I would urge people to visit, and I need to declare an interest as a trustee of that wonderful project. And this money was awarded to them for their Growing Together project...
Councillor Higgins, I thought you said you were going to be concise.
I am being concise, I am being concise, Lord Mayor, but I'm just...
If you've asked your question... Councillor Higgins, can you be quiet, please? If you've asked your question, thank you very much.
No, I haven't, I haven't completed the question, I haven't completed the question. Would the cabinet member therefore join me in congratulating all involved in the voluntary sector for this outstanding effort at a time when our own ability to provide such important activities is so severely impaired? And I think that was rather more concise than the previous question, Lord Mayor.
After councillor Stone, would councillor Apostathwaite please be ready to ask a question? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will try and be briefer even still. Does councillor Bell recall me asking him his question on his report last year, in which I asked about the future of the area around the arena, in which councillor Bell advised us that he hoped to have an exciting announcement for us very soon on that? Has anything happened since?
Thank you councillor Stone. After councillor Apostathwaite, could councillor Haddad be ready to speak, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In your report, you mentioned the Regenerate Partnership that has been established between the city council and the company NG, with the goal to develop and implement district energy schemes across the city. It is exciting that the Regenerate District Energy Centre is now under construction at the Helix, and that business planning is underway to identify the next projects to be undertaken by the partnership. Could you tell me how you see this work developing across the city over the next five to 10 years?
Thank you very much. After councillor Haddad, would councillor Driscoll please be ready to speak? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to ask a question also about new developments. It's fairly obvious that the report was written a while ago, so this has probably happened since the report was written. Councillor Bell did mention developments around the Helix and elsewhere, but I wonder if he can give us further information about the recent announcements relating to a 16 million pound government fund for housing infrastructure, which I gather some of it will be on the Helix, some in the Ouzbourn and some in the Outer West. Can we have some more details, please?
Thank you councillor Haddad. I have no one in the chamber indicating to speak after councillor Driscoll. Thank you.
Thank you. Newcastle City Council has been involved in bringing BioCity and the National Innovation Centres to the Helix. Could you briefly run us through how those initiatives are progressing, the benefits we anticipate for the city, and particularly how the future North of Tyne mayor could add value to this, whoever that might be, on May the 3rd?
Thank you councillor Driscoll. Would just give councillor Bell a chance to write everything down. Thank you councillor Bell.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll try to take them in the order that they were presented tonight. Councillor Lambert, over 50s. I think what we've actually seen nationally is a trend for more over 50s to be employed. I'm glad that Newcastle is managing to keep that up. Councillor Lambert mentioned particularly those that are within our old, I think you mentioned the phrase, blue collar areas of the city. I think it is important that we do manage to attract more people into work irrespective of age, equal opportunities for everybody irrespective of age, gender, and things like the CLLD is actually managing to achieve this. In some of our hardest reached communities, the programmes which are led by the community is actually getting people back into work or supporting existing businesses. So I'm glad to see that continuing, and we'll be monitoring to make sure that we're not only keeping up with the national trend, but actually surpassing it. To councillor Ashby. Councillor Ashby, there was quite a lot that you came up with there, but I do actually have to agree that Brexit and watching the latest news today on Brexit, that no deal would just be so bad for the North East of England. It's something that has got to be stopped, and we certainly do not want any of our politicians going down that line. We are an area that rely upon exports, and I believe the figure is around about 80% of our exports actually go into Europe, and I think no deal would be devastating for the businesses and the trades within this area. So we've got to work hard and support our MPs to get the right achievement from that. Funding, you had mentioned, the North East of England, Newcastle in particular. CLLD is one of the programmes indeed that's European funded, and that's now been... I declare an interest because I'm a board member for the CLLD, but we did write immediately with concerns about Brexit, and we've had guarantees that that funding will run right until the end of the projects irrespective of what happens with the result of Brexit. Councillor Ashby, if there's... Oh, there was one other thing, MIPIM you did mention, and the success of MIPIM. It was a fantastic success, and our officers have been non-stop, and we will be busy converting a number of the contacts that were made. This year, we're able to take 30 partners on the stand, and just one success that I've been told about is that this would all be subject to planning. One of the partners that was there, which is trying to bring a huge attraction to Newcastle, has actually been able to substantiate that all of the funding arrangements will be in place by quarter three of this year, if not earlier. So that was an amazing success, not just for the city but for our partners that were there with us. We are involved globally now, Newcastle is on the global stage. This is one of the biggest property investment events on the globe, and it's just right that Newcastle has a prominent place, Invest Newcastle has a prominent place at such an event. Councillor Higgins, CLLD? Yes, you asked me, would I join you with congratulations for the voluntary sector? I certainly would, and I've been down to that venue on many, many occasions, and they do some absolutely fantastic work down there. Other organisations would be glad to know that we've now streamlined the process, as I said in my introduction, and I'm hoping that we can get more community organisations coming through, so protecting and supplying more jobs for the area. Councillor Stone? The area of land at the rear of the station, which is known as Gateway Two Project, Phase Two, that is, as I said in my report, has now been tabled with the North East LEP. Two, that is, as I said in my report, has now been tabled with the North East LEP. We are working hard with the National Rail companies and also other partners involved. The plan that we've put forward not only improves the central station itself, but also opens up access to the area at the rear of the central station. So improving pedestrian footfall, especially for the young people that's using the UTC, but also freeing up land there that we have been, really, this council has been in a bit of a struggle to try to open up because of the confinement around it. This would actually release that land so that can come back in, as I mentioned in my report, for housing and for business, so supporting the local economy. So it's important that we do work with all partners to get that through to the next stage. Councillor Apostathwaite, you mentioned NG. That was real hard negotiations to get a partner on board, but the most prominent example I can give you is that we had to get the partner on board for the Helix project. And why that was so important is because that was an opportunity of a lifetime to have joint cooling and heating facilities all through one district heating system on the Helix project. And I do believe that was so important, it's such a flagship project, that we should lead the way in doing that. So I was delighted when we were able to sign the contract with NG. That's a good example of what else they want to do. The contract's only been in place for a short while. Plans are still under work, underwear, as how that would roll out across the city. But the intention is to join up as many heating network systems as possible, so not just better for the individuals, but also better for the environment and better for us as a city. Councillor Hurdard, I think this was the last one that came through, the housing fund bid? Yes, Newcastle has been successful. We've applied for that. We had to go through a full bidding process, but again, Newcastle has a good reputation and a good track record of securing national funding and bringing it here for the good of our city. You're right, part of the housing will be on the Helix project, but it's also at the mouth of the Ouzbourn and other sites across the city. This will provide the infrastructure that's required so that these housing sites can come to fruition. Again, more housing sites, more mixed housing uses, but also opportunities for businesses to remain within the city, but also opportunities for those people that actually need jobs and help to support their families and help to support the local economy. So it's not just the fact of winning money from the government to build houses and put the infrastructure in place, it's actually offering a future, some sort of aspirations for our families in this city to look up to and have an opportunity to work. So, Lord Mayor, I think I've covered everything. If I haven't, members, please contact us via email, and I'll give you a full response. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Does councillor agree to receive the report? Thank you. We move on to the next cabinet member update, the communities. Can I call on councillor Ramon to introduce his portfolio report, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Colleagues, I'm pleased and proud to present my first annual report of the new communities' portfolio. This portfolio was created to ensure our neighbourhood and the people who make them a success are central to how the council operates. This portfolio also presents a challenge to make contact and support the most disadvantaged, disengaged and diverse communities, and my portfolio confirms some progress on the work undertaken. Newcastle is a vibrant, open city, one which provides a warm welcome to people from across the world regardless of their background. Residents here take great pride in uniting behind shared values, and we see this in so many ways, from special events such as Freedom City to the annual Chinese New Year festivals. Those values, though, face challenges. Continuous austerity and the impact of hate crime and the extremism have tested our communities. Newcastle City Council continues to support residents, volunteers and the organisation which hand them a voice, but it does so with drastically reduced resources. At the same time, our city has, like others, had to stand up to racism and extremist protest marches on our streets. There are no easy answers to this problem, but we do know that Newcastle remains a great place to live, work and visit. And I think the communities' portfolio demonstrates how Newcastle City Council is committed to both supporting and protecting our communities, providing a safe environment for people to live and to thrive. As part of that commitment, I want to thank all the hardworking staff at the council and elsewhere, who make sure that even in times of reduced resources, we are a city that proudly comes together to support each other. Can I apologise and thank the scrutiny committee's comments, in particular highlighting the absence of any reference to human trafficking and modern day slavery in this particular report? I acknowledge and welcome those comments, and I will ensure a future report does cover this topic. I will email council information on this particular topic. And with this, I present my report, Lord Mayor, and happy to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ramon. A number of members have asked to speak to the report and ask questions. Can I call first of all on councillor Holland, followed by councillor Anita Lower? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Ramon, on your report. I was particularly pleased to see that the Shout Out campaign, which was trialled in Ouzbourn Ward, was part of your report. Can you give me some feedback on how far the campaign has been taken up by bars and venues in the city, and how the training around challenging harassment in bars has progressed? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Holland. After councillor Lower, would councillor Greenough be ready to ask questions, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I just congratulate on a very good report and a very good report to scrutiny as well? But the one thing I was wanting to ask you about is Newcastle has now been upgraded to a preventive priority area, and I just wondered if you would be committed to maybe having some training for members to bring them up to date with what their responsibilities are in respect to that? Thanks, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lower. After councillor Greenough, could councillor Lovett please be ready to speak? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I firstly just congratulate councillor Ramon? I mentioned this at scrutiny, but I believe he received the highly commended award from the British Muslim Award, the Seventh Annual Award, I believe. So just congratulations for, I believe, spirits in the community, which I think we should be very proud that councillor Ramon received that award, so I'd just like to congratulate him on that. In relation to your report, you mentioned the CCTV, and particularly the work that was first trialled within West Denton, allowing the police and fire service to access the CCTV camera. Now, I think that's been a great success. I just wanted to check that that's been rolled out across the city now and that that can work anywhere to stop, so that fire crews and ambulance service, et cetera, are aware what they're going into when they get reports. And secondly, mentions about the Safe Newcastle offices being based within police stations for a portion of the time. And just, I think personally from Denton West up, that's been a great success, and just whether that can be rolled out further, because I think for things like trying to design out crime, it's really important to have those officers in with the police a couple of days a week so they can work on solutions rather than waiting until problems appear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Greenough. After councillor Lovett, could councillor Avery be ready, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I too welcome the report from councillor Ramon. I'm pleased to see that unlike councillor Powers and Stevenson, who both criticised me on Twitter during the budget meeting in March, that councillor Ramon recognises littering as antisocial behaviour. It's an issue that needs to be addressed. I have a few questions, there's just three. Safe Newcastle and others like Play Newcastle are delivering a much needed service across our city but rely heavily on funding. These essential service providers are vital in stemming antisocial behaviour and preventing those involved in becoming involved in more serious crime at some point in the future. Would councillor Ramon take time to identify a long term, sustainable, resourced and preventative strategy through Safe Newcastle and include this in a future report to council? Does councillor Ramon believe the current litter ban strategy is contributing to the problems of litter and dog mess across the city, and would he consider proposing a report on how best to deal with the problem moving forward? And graffiti is becoming a serious antisocial behaviour issue across our city and is a criminal offence. Some graffiti is linked to gang culture, and to the layperson may not appear to be offensive and would not be dealt with by the council. Would councillor Ramon consider proposing a report on graffiti? Safe Newcastle and Northumbria Police could advise, recommending a review of what should be included in the offensive list. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Sorry, Chair, I feel, I just find it absolutely shocking, really. A point of order, there was a direct criticism that was just made of me.
Councillor Powers, you said a point of order, please.
My point of order, Lord Mayor, is I've just been accused of something that I didn't do. I've just checked on my Twitter feed, I said nothing in the last council meeting on Twitter or regarding anything to do with litter or fly tipping within that time, over that time period. So I wondered perhaps if that councillor wants to take an opportunity to attract that rather childish remark in this debating chamber.
Thank you, councillor Powers. I'm sure the appropriate action will be taken by councillor Lovett. After councillor Avery, would councillor Stone be ready to speak, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm sure we're all aware in this chamber of the two horrific attacks that were made against the Bahar Academy. I was wondering if the cabinet member could tell us what specific support the council and Safe Newcastle has provided. Secondly, as a Jewish person, we're well aware that places of worship have been vulnerable for some time and represent frequently soft targets that extremists can target. The Jewish community has been fortunate to get a significant amount of support from public sector bodies for some time to protect its places of worship. Can the cabinet member tell us what opportunities and fundraising and resources are available to other faith communities to protect places of worship?
Thank you, councillor Avery. After councillor Stone, would councillor Schofield please be ready to ask a question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Habib, for the report. Could I ask a question regarding the situation with respect of the PCC and whether it's true that the council has been unable to get her to come to scrutiny to talk about her budget and her preset proposals for her office? Can he confirm that he has had discussions with the PCC about this issue? And can he confirm how much contribution the PCC is making to Newcastle's safer communities, community safety activities?
Thank you, councillor Stone. After councillor Schofield, would councillor Allen please be ready to ask a question?
I'd like to thank councillor Ramon and the community team for a very comprehensive report in a very difficult area for our city. And I'd like to pick up on the points made by councillor Ramon about how we achieve inclusiveness. The Unity Carnival, which I know councillor Ramon supports, is a great example of how we do achieve it. And with that in mind, my question concerns the Prevent Programme, which some Muslim communities will demonise them or is just focused on them. So my question is, what is the council doing to ensure Muslim communities are not singled out and the rise of the far right extremism is challenged? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Schofield. After councillor Allen, would councillor Higgins be ready to ask his question, please?
Thank you, councillor Ramon. On page 46, you mention the antisocial behaviour that has been taking place in several wards in the city. Unfortunately, you don't mention Parklands Ward, which has recently seen a spate of antisocial behavioural activities and in some cases, instances of criminal damage. Ward councillors have met with local police officers to discuss these problems, and we're looking for ways to combat this behaviour, which is terrifying some of our residents. I stress that it is only in certain parts of the ward and that the vast majority of our residents are able to live in peace, but for those residents who are experiencing the antisocial behaviour, we'd like to know the following. One, does this mean that you and councillor officers are ignoring the problems that some of our residents have been experiencing? If so, why? If not, what do you plan to do to help solve the issue? Two, would a return to the multi-agency SNAPs meetings where we used to raise such issues help this situation by flagging up problems so they can be tackled before they worsen? And three, are you willing to meet with Parkland Ward councillors to discuss this issue in more detail? Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, councillor Allen. Can I just double check before we hear from councillor Higgins? Did you wish to speak or ask a question, councillor Bell? I saw you by the... If you are, can you just be ready after councillor Higgins then, please? Sorry? Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, councillor Higgins?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I mean, the context of my question has been partially covered by others, but I'll read it out very quickly, if I may. At a time of increased community tensions following Brexit and the recent appalling attacks at the Bahar Academy, I am pleased to see the setting up of the Hate Crime and Community Tensions Monitoring Board. However, it does disturb me that the EDL and other right wing groups are still allowed to organise marches in our city, including a demonstration this forthcoming weekend at the monument. Does the cabinet member therefore share my own view that we as a council should seek to exert greater influence on the police to ban such marches, which are simply designed to stir up community and racial disharmony in our city? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Higgins. Unless I'm wrong, I've got no one else wishing to ask a question to the cabinet member. So if you're ready, councillor Ramon, thank you very much.
Let's see if I could read my own handwriting. Right, I'll take councillor Holland. Thank you for your question regarding the Shout Out campaign. If it's okay, what I'll do is, I'm happy to provide a full on, proper response, but I'll give you a simple start. From September, sorry, from October of 2018, additional take up, there's been additional 25 take up. So it is a huge progress. You would know this because the Shout Out campaign actually started from your ward. So like I said, I will pass forward a thorough response to the question from councillor Lower on rolling out Prevent training to elected members. Both myself and councillor Lower recently attended a leadership training conference, and a simple answer is yes. It is something that I'll be looking at to roll out and introduce because of the immense benefit every elected member will have. So there you are. Councillor Greenoff, thank you very much. Yes, I was honoured to have received a prestigious accolade from the British Muslim Awards, and I'm proud that my fellow Muslim councillor colleagues, Dibu Ahad and Eram Ali, the contribution they are making to the city and the Muslim community, and one of us is recognised for such a recognition. And again, a simple response to you, I'm mindful of the rest of the agenda, and I'm prepared to offer you a thorough response, but a simple answer is yes to each of your questions in terms of having those services and provision available. questions in terms of having those services and provision available in terms of the CCTV and officers within the police, local police is. Councillor Lovett, well firstly, I'm going to say is, could you email me the long list of questions which you've posed to me? It's not me docking out from the answering your question, but it's always easy to write one question down to figure out a response, so if you would do that, I'd be more than happy to respond to you. Councillor Avery, what happened to Bahar was absolutely shocking and it's something we should not experience here in our great city. Each and every one of us and my predecessors, our predecessors here in the council and the community, we have made Newcastle a wonderful place and racism has no place whatsoever. I can confirm that the Home Office have increased the amount that it had previously earmarked for places of worship to access funding to make each places of worship secure. I've begun to have discussion with officers to see if we are in a position as an authority to bid for a pot of funding for us to administer and provide the support, because it can be quite a bureaucratic process for some of the places. So yeah. Councillor Stone, your particular question on the PCC and the council tax preset, again, I'm more than happy to provide you a more in-depth, thorough response if you, if you be kind enough to email me that particular question. Councillor Schofield, I think you've raised another very serious question and perhaps it's a bit interconnected with councillor Lower's question. Muslim communities should not feel the Prevent is demonising or targeting Muslims nor any other communities for that matter. We as a local authority and every other local authority have a duty of care to protect the most vulnerable and one of the things that I've managed to engage in discussion each time I've taken on any work around Prevent was to hammer home the importance of tackling far-right extremism, that is, for us as a local authority, the most serious concern. So what I'm again discussing with officers is opening up a debate with elected members and members of the community who feel they are being demonised to quash any notion. So it is something that I'll be, I'll be doing and certainly invite all colleagues to attend. Councillor Allen, again, I think you've asked me three different sets of questions. If I could answer one of them, one of which was the willingness to meet, I'm more than happy to meet not just you, any ward comrades, colleagues who would want to meet to discuss particular issues. Again, I'm more than happy to answer some of your questions if you're willing to email those over, over to me. Finally councillor Higgins, particular point around the demonstration and some of the hate-filled organisation who bring nothing but their bigotry views and racist and hate views, well, simple answer is, my personal response is, I for one would not want to see any one of, one of those extreme group ever to enter any part of our amazing city. The sad reality is, we as a local authority do not have the power to ban them. The power lies on the police. I continue to have these discussions with the PCC, as has the leader of the, of the council, each time extreme group do express an interest to attend and we are, we will continue to have these debate and discussion with Northumbria Police. Like I said, they're the ones who can ban them. I hope I've answered all your questions, but once again, if I've missed anything, feel free to email me over and I'll provide a thorough response. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Roman. We'll just wait for councillor Bell to get back to her seat, thank you. Is the report from councillor Roman agreed?
Agreed.
Final cabinet member update, DLOC and housing, please. Can I call on councillor McCarthy to introduce her portfolio report? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I'm delighted to bring my annual update to City Council tonight and very happy to answer questions that are raised by colleagues on it. Can I, Lord Mayor, first of all, say a huge thank you to all of the staff who support me to deliver on this administration's priorities in my portfolio and I include colleagues in many, in all of the directorates really, across the City Council. I'd like to pass on thanks to overview and scrutiny, who gave considerable time to consider the issues on what is actually a very busy agenda at scrutiny, but they gave lots of time to enable questions and responses to be given and I hope all of the issues that were raised there were addressed. Lord Mayor, I continue to be proud of the council's achievements in active inclusion, in homelessness, our commitment to affordable and supported housing, all highlights, I think, of the work that we've been involved in over the last year. And I couldn't possibly include everything that's within the report, as colleagues will see, it is a very detailed report. And of course, Lord Mayor, over the last year, the leader and I have been, well, actually and other colleagues across the council who are involved in other aspects of the devolution deal, but of course, that's a new area of work which adds to our ability to bring resources and continue to invest in our city. Lord Mayor, the last thing I want to say really is that I couldn't do, I couldn't undertake the role that I have without working in partnership, so not just my colleagues on this side of the council chamber, but all of the council officers who support me and beyond, many colleagues in the voluntary and community sector who support the work, people in business, people in health, working in the health sector and many beyond. So can we please record thanks to all of them who help us to deliver on really important issues for our residents? Thank you, Lord Mayor, I'm very happy to answer questions.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. May I ask councillor Talbot to ask the question she has wished to speak to and followed by councillor Haddad, please?
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you councillor McCarthy for a very positive report. I wanted to ask about the selective licensing scheme. You mentioned in the report that consultation is ongoing to extend the selective licensing scheme to up to a further eight, eighteen thousand five hundred properties in the city. So I just wondered if you had any feedback at the moment as to the results of that consultation? And also whether such a scheme or the way it's implemented would encourage and work with private landlords to encourage them to support tenancies from people who are in receipt of universal credit? As you identify in the report, that some landlords in the private rented sector are reluctant to take tenants who are on universal credit, which obviously cuts down their ability to find somewhere to live. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Talbot. After councillor Haddad, would councillor Posethwaite, please, be ready to ask a question? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to thank councillor McCarthy for her report. There's much in the report with which the Liberal Democrats can agree. We are very supportive of the work undertaken to tackle hate crimes and raise awareness of the problems experienced by our transgender citizens, because we know that isn't always easy to undertake. Also very supportive of the efforts to support and develop the role of the voluntary and charity sector in this city, because we are aware of their important contribution to both the life and the economy of the city. Also, the work which has been undertaken under the banner of the City of Sanctuary and this has given much-needed second chance to many families who have experienced trauma, hardship and horror. And I'd like to now move to some questions about housing. Thank you to councillor Talbot, you've asked one of the questions I would like to have asked, I'll be interested in that answer, because we, we do welcome the moves for tighter control over private rented sector and support the extension of selective licensing. We also welcome, welcome the development that she mentions in her report to provide more supported and assisted living type accommodation for our older and less able residents. And I'd like to, want to ask, what percentage of this type of accommodation is proposed for the new housing developments across the Outer West and the Great Park? Councillor McCarthy has written about the right housing in the right location and she will be aware that I've brought issues up before to deal with this. We welcome the percentage of affordable housing mentioned in her report about new build. However, the report does not outline the percentage of social housing being included in the new build plans. Can she tell us what percentage of social housing suitable for families has been built so far? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Haddad. After councillor Posethwaite, would councillor Schofield be ready to ask a question, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm interested in the council's work on air quality as part of our collaborative work north of Tyne. We really do need to clean up the air in our region and London has just introduced their scheme to respond to their challenge of polluted air. There is a great deal of criticism in the media about the proposals put forward in the council's air quality public consultation. Can you please explain why we are not focusing on public transport and behaviour change, i.e. getting people to use their cars less?
Thank you councillor Posethwaite. Councillor Schofield, you're not going to ask? Okay, okay. Could I call then on councillor Cot to ask a question, please? Followed by councillor Young, thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and thank you for your report councillor McCarthy. Like you, I do believe that we have a very good democratic services in this city and we have very capable officers. I welcome that and your commitment to that in your report. However, I have one question and that relates to future governance arrangements. Since the present administration has been in power, I think we can say that ward governance has slipped well down the agenda, which has left local communities like mine in Fawdon and West Gosforth feeling isolated from the city council. So I'm wondering if she can suggest some ways in which the council will re-engage with residents at a ward level? And I'd be interested in any plans there might be for exploring the development of neighbourhood plans, town or parish councils as part of that. My second question is a broader one. Quite rightly, the council has at its heart tackling inequality and that's an aspiration that I share with councillor McCarthy. However, in the budget and in the council's equality scheme, one of the issues is very clear, is that there isn't sufficient focus on people with disabilities. And in fact, in the equality scheme that you presented to council, disability didn't even register as a specific issue. So I'm wondering whether there are issues that you can suggest about how the council is dealing with issues of disability? We had this, of course, in the budget where disabled people seem to be the ones most targeted in the cuts. So I'm quite interested in what the council is doing in relation to people with disability and whether the rhetoric that is expressed is matched by reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Cot. After councillor Young, would councillor Casey be ready to ask? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I welcome the hard work done by the Active Inclusion Newcastle team to help our disadvantaged residents to secure the foundations for a stable life, a home, an income, financial inclusion and employment opportunities. My question is, what in particular is the council doing to support people who are still paying the punitive bedroom tax and those who are struggling to get by relying on food banks to survive? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Young. After councillor Casey, would councillor Ferguson be ready to ask his question, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As Chair of the Homelessness Prevention Trailblazer Steering Group, I have been hugely impressed by the work of our staff and partners in supporting the most vulnerable people in our community, including those with disabilities, to remain in their homes and regain a level of stability and dignity when they've been hit by Tory-imposed austerity. Given that the Trailblazer has been funded by central government for a trial period, what lessons would you like to see government learn from the success of the programme to date? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Casey. After councillor Ferguson, would councillor Chisholm be ready to ask his question, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The report presented makes reference to the funding provided to the voluntary sector through the Newcastle Fund. Can councillor McCarthy confirm how Labour's vote at last month's council meeting to remove one hundred thousand pounds from the Newcastle Fund in the next financial year and to plan to remove a further two hundred thousand pounds the year after will affect the sustainability of the smaller organisations referenced in her report as recipients of funds? Can I also ask, in what ways will the city's voluntary sector be less thriving and vibrant by 2021, 22?
Thank you councillor Ferguson. Councillor Chisholm?
I have two questions about housing. This year is the centenary year of council housing, so that's something to celebrate, but I think that it's also a moment to reflect on new problems and evolving housing needs. And I'd like to ask about councillor McCarthy's portfolios work in the area of supported housing and also rough sleeping in Newcastle. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chisholm. I have no one else indicating they wish to ask a question of councillor McCarthy. Thank you councillor McCarthy.
Sorry, thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Let's run through those. Councillor Talbot asks me about selective licensing and the proposed extension of the scheme. I guess she and, I think it was councillor Haddad who was also interested in the outcomes. We've clearly not done a full analysis of the consultation, or at least not, not a full analysis that's in public yet, but you'd not be surprised to hear that there are landlords in the city who are not supporting us extending the selective licensing scheme and the overwhelming view of tenants that the team spoke to was support. I think we are exploring that opportunity because we want everyone in the city to live in a decent home and we would like to have an enforcement team that helps us to manage the private rented sector. And although I'm not prejudging the decision, which will obviously come to cabinet probably over the summer, you know, those are the issues that we're trying to address by considering such a scheme. Councillor Talbot asks me particularly about universal credit, tenants who are receiving universal credit. And of course, it isn't helpful when, you know, tenants do need to have somewhere to live and we don't have enough council housing in the city. About a quarter of our housing in the city is in the private rented sector. So we clearly do need to take opportunities that we can to build more houses, but we also need to support private landlords, to encourage them to take tenants who are on universal credit. And I think the support structures that we offer through our welfare rights and active inclusion teams mean that individual people who are struggling with debt can be supported. And I could give examples and case studies of people who've been helped, who are in exactly that position and working with council officers. We've managed for individual tenants... We've managed for individual tenants to succeed in those tenancies where potentially otherwise they might not remain in their home. And we understand that making, you know, making people homeless actually is a cost on the whole system because we want to think about it in terms of prevention. Councillor Huddart raised a whole range of issues, Lord Mayor, in relation to equalities, the role and contribution of the voluntary and community sector. And as I say in my report, I'm really proud of what we achieve in all of that. And in relation to the specifics, the minimum that we will build of what is called affordable housing, and of course, it's a government definition, not our definition, is 15%. We've exceeded that in the last two years, and I think the detail of that is actually in a cabinet report. She will be aware, councillor Huddart will be aware, that in terms of the supported housing developments that we've got across the city, in the main, they are being developed on brownfield sites. So they're not necessarily going into the Outer West or the Great Park. Well, there will be some in the Outer West, but maybe not on the Great Park. I'm happy to forward to councillor Huddart the detail that she has requested. Councillor Apostathwaite raises a really, really important issue, and thank you for raising that question. As you know, Stella, transport is within my role, although the specifics on air quality sit with councillor Ainsley. The air quality consultation is a joint process between three councils locally, so with us and North Tyneside and Gateshead. And it seeks to take action to solve a public health emergency which is facing us on Tyneside. It's a problem we can't ignore, as you say. It contributes to hundreds of deaths a year, and it's time we faced up to it. The council would, as you said, actually prefer to invest in public transport and behaviour change. We would rather do that with other wide range of measures. But the government has made clear, as a result of the High Court ruling, that councils have got to act fast, and the preference to solve this is about charging people to use polluted roads. I do think, Lord Mayor, we need to be very clear here. The powers the government is relying on for these changes can only be introduced by councils. There are no powers under law for mayors or combined authorities to impose or block air quality measures. The legislation only empowers highways authorities, which the combined authority is not and won't be in the future. Councillor Cot asks me about ward governance, suggesting it's moving down the agenda. I would like to remind councillor Cot that one of the issues we've got in this council is austerity and a significant number of issues that we would all really appreciate.
Councillor Cot, please be quiet. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Austerity has impacts that colleagues on the opposite side of this council chamber don't seem to want to recognise. Ward governance is not down the agenda, Lord Mayor. There are opportunities, if he so wishes, to support and work with his local community. The issue that he is raising is we do not have the staff that we had in 2010 to deliver it in the way that we did previously. The council does engage with residents at ward level over a number of issues, and me and my colleagues on this side of the council chamber take opportunities to bring our community together to discuss those really important issues. Councillor Cot raised the issue of parish councils and neighbourhood plans. There have been a number developed over the last few years, although none in the last couple of years that I can recall. But they are obviously down to local communities in local neighbourhoods and indeed in areas of the city. Parish councils can be set up, neighbourhood plans can be developed and supported and have been. If there are communities across the city who want support in that, then I suggest they approach their councillors and get the appropriate support. In terms of the challenge that he made about our support for disabled people, I think what councillor Cot is suggesting is that disability is not a protected characteristic, and on that he is quite simply wrong. So we have no rhetoric this side, we have reality. We take into account the needs of disabled people, as we do with all those who are affected by protected characteristics. Councillor Young asked about the Active Inclusion Team. There are people across the city who continue to be affected by the bedroom tax and growing numbers, really, really sadly, growing numbers relying on food banks. I think councillor Driscoll raised how many children had benefited from access to food parcels, and I think it was in January, huge numbers of children who rely on food banks. I think that's shocking in the fifth or sixth richest country in the world. The welfare rights team, working with the housing benefit team and others across the council, will do all we can to support people who are struggling. Colleagues will know that we've set out a simpler way of dealing with debt. So when individuals end up in debt, we try to support them to create a budget that's manageable for them. So we are doing our best, but we do have limited resources. Councillor Casey probably knows more about the homelessness trailblazer than I do, but in terms of lessons for the government, I think what we have shown through our trailblazer programme is not the work that's been funded by government for two years, but I think it's the last 10 years where we've been working together to try and prevent individuals and people ending up homeless. So what the message I would give back to government is that we need to work holistically and not try and solve, you know, what the government currently do with funding on homelessness is reward failure. So councils across the UK who spend huge amounts on placing families in bed and breakfast, I personally think that's a waste of resource. As you will see shortly, we are trying to actually, well, I think it was in Active Inclusion, the Active Inclusion update this week, and I hope colleagues across the council chamber do receive that. I think we've set out this week our aim to work for housing first, which is a different approach, which puts people into proper housing rather than into hostels. And we've seen successes elsewhere in Europe, and I think we will try and learn from that. Councillor Ferguson asks me about the Newcastle Fund and the cuts and the sustainability of small organisations. Councillor Ferguson may well like to look at the reports that have been presented to the Voluntary Sector Liaison Group in the council. Each year for the last five or six years, we've had a report from the voluntary and community, an independent report from the voluntary and community sector pulled together by Newcastle CVS that sets out very clearly how the voluntary and community sector are thriving less than they were when the Labour government were in control. So I'm talking about the impact of austerity since 2010 has meant that small organisations are not thriving as well as they did. Austerity has consequences. We are just about to consult on the proposals that we've made about the Newcastle Fund. And of course, the fund contributions to organisations from April from this week have already been agreed in the autumn. So the proposals that are coming forward are for next financial year. Councillor Chisholm asks about the 100 years of council housing. I think it's fantastic, we need to celebrate that. I know that in Benwell and Scottswood, Pendour Estate have already had an event celebrating 100 years of council housing. We want to see council housing develop over the next 100 years, too. In terms of rough sleeping and the problems of homelessness in the city, I've probably addressed much of the issues on homelessness. But maybe, Lord Mayor, just to say that although colleagues might see a lot of people who are sleeping rough on our city, we don't have a significant problem. We have maybe half a dozen each night who are sleeping on the streets, and we do need to offer them support, and we do need to address that. And I'm not trying to dismiss the issues. Many of the people who are sleeping rough on our streets have been evicted from some of our hostel accommodation because they are unable to comply with the rules in the housing that is on offer. Colleagues will be aware that we've launched Street Zero. That isn't, and the council will support that initiative. But I think that is showing that our city wants to do all we can for those who are very vulnerable here, and we look forward to eliminating rough sleeping by 2022. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Before I ask councillor whether they are ready to receive the report, can I just apologise to councillor Cot for asking him to be quiet? I should have asked you just to be more estranged in your frustration. That was the thing that I ought to have said. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, okay. Does council agree to receive the report? Item number nine, questions by members. We have one oral question from councillor King. And it is councillor Bell who is to reply to the question from councillor King, not councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Over the past 20 years, planning and construction has taken place on Castle Ward for the Great Park, an expansion of family housing in Dinnington. There have been a number of issues over the years, including broadband at the site, lack of planning and inter-agency working with the CCGs for health service expansion and poor responsiveness of the developer to people's needs. One of the most vexing issues has been the design of the spine road within Great Park. The route of this road is not dictated by geography, topography or utility, but because two rival developers have fallen out and refused to cooperate for the benefit of the community. This has left the local community with a road that runs parallel to an existing road, curves outside normal practice with noise level figures that have been manipulated to assure planning and by applying city centre exemption clauses. Gold standard flood risk studies, the sequential exception test, have not been completed. The road also crosses a watercourse that may increase flooding for a nearby community. Given the extent of these problems and the impact on the local community because of communication breakdowns, will this administration consider the reinstatement of regular committees with officers and councillors in the new developments in Calaton and Throckley, showing that they have learnt the lessons of cancelling such committees on the Great Park? Give these communities a voice.
Thank you, councillor King. I do apologise to members for not indicating that, as it is already printed and we have received it, it was only for councillor Bell to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, councillor, for bringing the question tonight. The council has robust governance processes in place for the Great Park. The spine road referred to at the Great Park went through rigorous planned assessments and was granted planned permission in 2017. All technical issues, including flooding and connectivity, were fully assessed during this process, and all comments were received from residents were taken into account in the decision-making process. This was also subject to an investigation by the local government onbudsman, who found there was no fault, no fault on the council's part in dealing with planning matters. All three ward councillors participated in the Castle Ward Committee on 25th of February, where the Newcastle Great Park's project manager gave an update on the spine road and the junction onto Kingston Park. Following discussions with ward members, we are in the process of setting up quarterly meetings to assist with communications between residents, stakeholders and the consortium. The first meeting is on the 9th of April this year. The Great Park has a number of established residence forums, and new groups are emerging. These are supported by the council and the Newcastle Great Park. The Newcastle Great Park Board is chaired by the council's director of place and manages this coordination, and the council's website provides information to keep residents informed of progress in a number of issues. The new developments coming forward in Calaton and Throckley are welcomed. It will take some time for these new communities to become established. Yet this administration will continue to monitor and progress, the progress of these developments, and will support the establishment of the new communities. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Councillor King, do you have a supplementary question? No, okay, thank you. Any other questions from, no? There has been one written question on the agenda, and the reply has been circulated and also displayed in the foyer. Item number 10, is the appointment agreed as set out? Thank you. Item 11, notice of motion, increased funding for public health. I call on councillor McCarthy to move this motion to be seconded by councillor Kilgore.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I'm really delighted to move this motion. It is a set motion, a national motion that's been written by Cancer Research UK. And I'm really pleased that we have brought it here tonight. Lord Mayor, the government decision to move public health responsibilities to the local authority was the right decision. I believe public health is now in the proper place. It's local authorities that can impact on the general health and wellbeing of our citizens. And obviously, health services provide support and treatment when we need them. Lord Mayor, the 2015 announcement of the £200 million cut to the public health budget, as well as more, nearly 4% in a year in real terms cut, has huge consequences on the work that we're able to undertake on public health in this city. And of course, for other local authorities having responsibility for public health, they will have equal problems. Austerity in public health does have significant consequences. We know that smoking remains the single biggest cause of preventable cancer. And we also can see the numbers of people who die early from preventable cancers from smoking, obesity and alcohol. Now, we've heard today about the learning that we've got around air quality, too. This motion, Lord Mayor, is clearly setting out that removing funding from public health prevention is the wrong decision. We would argue that more investment is needed for prevention, and we know from evidence that it works, it's effective. Lord Mayor, I worked in education as part of the public health team in my professional life, where we focused on children and young people's needs. I know that our work in schools was very, very effective. That work continues with the team that are based within our public health team here in the city. This Cancer Research UK motion is calling on the government to provide more funding. Actually, it's going further than that, to provide sustainable levels of funding, really, for public health. We know that moving funding from frontline health services to prevention is highly unlikely from the health sector. We also know, and I know councillor Kilgore will say this, we also know that our health and care system is under huge pressures. And the government haven't recognised that at all. We're still waiting for the green paper that's been promised for months now. We know that public health, poor public health, leads to local businesses struggling with staff sickness, and that, too, will affect our local economy. So, Lord Mayor, I think this motion is calling for proper, adequate and sustainable public health funding. And it's also recognising the impact that the public health funding has on the health of our residents. We know that cuts in public health in our city are hard to ignore. We want to invest in sustainable resources and initiatives that prevent ill health, that support our residents to be more active and to live well as they age. It will also contribute, Lord Mayor, to reducing inequalities. Actually, public health have excellent evidence, really, on narrowing the gap on inequalities. And because we base the work on evidence, it means that we know that that investment is effective. Lord Mayor, supporting a health and care system that we can be proud of is the right thing for us to do as a council and would be the right thing for this government to invest in, too. Public health investment is based on the very best evidence that we've got. And for that to be effective, we've got to have sustainable funding. Lord Mayor, I move the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Councillor Kilgore?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Local government has a great story to tell regarding public health. Since being given responsibility Since being given responsibility in 2013, councils have maintained or improved 80% of the public health outcomes of the nation, while at the same time having had their funding cut by 49% in real terms between 2010 and the last financial year. That's quite an achievement. Nationally, successes include teenage conception rates dropping by 23%, the overall number of adults smoking cigarettes in England falling by around 1.6 million and the lowest numbers of suicides and the numbers of suicides steadily decreasing, with the male suicide rate at its lowest since 1981. Clearly, the relocation of public health to local authorities in England has been largely successful. Public health has become integrated into general policymaking and certainly in Newcastle, public health and the wider determinants of health have been understood in the wider sense, with the adoption of the hot food takeaway supplementary planning policy, funds being used imaginatively to maintain green open space and the creation of the venom health and wellbeing hub, for example. We are not complacent, however. Reversing public health funding cuts would produce even better outcomes while relieving pressures on the NHS and adult social care in the long term, and I say adult social care advisedly. While traditionally, public health has been associated with issues such as smoking cessation, childhood obesity and levels of alcohol consumption, which contribute to certain cancers, diabetes or coronary heart disease, for example, and therefore reduce demand for NHS services, we are increasingly seeing the overlap with social care. Prevention messaging, the what's good for your heart is good for your head idea around developing dementia, health and wellbeing and the effect on some forms of mental ill health, issues around loneliness and social isolation and the benefits of physical activity all have a long-term impact on the demand for adult social care. For government to cut the public health budget is obviously both short-sighted and a false economy. Local authorities, local authority delivery of public health is effective, accountable, efficient and offers good value for money. But until we can reverse the health inequalities linked to deprivation, welfare reform and austerity more generally, however, we will continue to face public health challenges, the immediate causes of which remain tobacco misuse, poor diet, poor mental health, physical inactivity and substance misuse. In the meantime, we can and are making a significant difference. Second the motion, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Kilgore. We have received an amendment to this motion. Can I call on councillor Taylor to move the amendment, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I did email councillor McGinnis about this amendment. I do hope it's considered as a friendly amendment, just raising a few issues that weren't in the original motion and some problems faced by specific groups and I don't really see that just because it's a national motion, we shouldn't make some minor changes. I'm sure no one here would doubt the importance of a properly funded public health service in connecting and linking up an area's local services to ensure healthier outcomes, reducing smoking, tackling obesity and mental health problems, reducing teenage pregnancies and sexually transmitted diseases, promoting healthier lifestyles and exercise, reducing air pollution, improving housing and we know that improving public health and reducing health inequalities can't be achieved by the NHS alone. Can I remind colleagues that it was work undertaken by Liberal Democrats in the coalition government that helped ensure the responsibility for public health returned to local authorities, giving local councillors a lead role on public health and wellbeing in their communities and I don't think anyone here would want to change that responsibility. But as councillor McCarthy said, the Tory government since 2015 has made it very hard for councils to fulfil their aims for public health improvement, especially with one of the first acts of the government being to slash the £200 million from the National Ring Fence Public Health Budget for England. The Tories' decision didn't make sense then and it certainly doesn't make sense now and they've actually made further cuts, even though, as the motion says, public health work can stop people from becoming ill in the first place. For example, research has shown that for every pound spent on smoking prevention programmes in schools, £15 can be saved in NHS treatment later in life and every pound spent on developing supportive networks for people with drug and alcohol addictions returns £5 to the public sector in reduced healthcare, social care and criminal justice costs. As a cancer specialist, I'm particularly keen for continuing work on tackling the preventable causes of cancer and we therefore have to work with Cancer UK and others to ensure there is increased and sustainable funding for public health and that prevention of ill health is top of the agenda. Of course, local councils can't achieve the necessary improvements alone, it needs joined-up working by primary and secondary care, local councils, pharmacists, dentists and the voluntary sector to engage with local people and provide the services they need. Some progress on joined-up working has been made, but we believe we could achieve more and I particularly welcome the success of the Pharmacy First Programme via 111 Service, which is helping pharmacists give people advice on public health and improvement in reducing smoking and losing weight. So what more could we be doing in Newcastle to get the best results for our residents in spite of these savage cuts? I think we need targets for reducing smoking prevalence, increasing screening for breast, cervical and bowel cancer, reducing emergency admissions for spine and hip fractures, reducing suicide rates and decreasing hospital admissions for self-harm, reducing permanent admissions for the over 65 to residential and nursing homes, increasing the number of women breastfeeding at six to eight weeks, reducing excess weight in our four and five-year-olds and tackling the appalling obesity crisis that this country is facing, reducing emergency admissions for heart and lung disease, reducing admission to hospital for children with tooth decay, a frighteningly high figure, it's something like 40,000 children in the UK are admitted for tooth decay. And obviously, we need to carry on trying to increase physical activity. And we need to work to ensure that certain groups of residents aren't adversely affected because we know that BAME groups and LGBT plus groups are more likely to have poor ill health and that we have to tackle that. The aim of public health should firstly be that prevention and self-care become the primary focus of the transformation of health outcomes and that there is a focus on young people, elderly people and those with mental health problems. We need to make sure that work done to improve health outcomes will be research and evidence-based and that transformation of health outcomes will be achieved by tackling the wider determinants of health, facilitating healthy choices and finally that all partners are committed to working together across traditional boundaries to achieve these aims. So I strongly support this motion and I hope that the council will do more to try and achieve these benefits that we've recommended. Of course, we're willing to campaign with the Labour Group to oppose the Conservative government's ongoing cuts to public health budgets and to work towards the goal of providing the required level of funding for public health work as part of an integrated and devolved public health budget.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor King?
I second this motion and reserve the right to speak.
Thank you councillor King. Several members have indicated they wish to speak on this. Can I call first on councillor Schofield, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I welcome this motion and hope that it will get unanimous support across the chamber. Our public health is the Cinderella of the current health system. This is both wrong and foolish, it's also dangerous as the effective means of securing the health and wellbeing of our population and the prevention of diseases are being undermined or withdrawn because of the cuts to the public health grant, set to continue as we know in 2021. Now, everyone in this chamber and the city has reason to be grateful for the discoveries and work that have underpinned our public health system. They have given us clean water, sanitation, immunisation against childhood diseases and much, much more. Of course, in the late 19th century and early 20th century, there were few cures for the terrifying diseases and epidemics, many now controlled, such as smallpox, typhoons, cholera and dysentery. There was also no effective treatment for infections such as pneumonia or rheumatic fever or influenza. Significantly, any treatment that was available was generally way beyond the purse of ordinary people and thousands died unnecessarily, particularly children. As we know, some of these diseases are on the rise again and as the motion makes clear, we are faced now with other new and modern versions of disease and ill health, e.g. cancers, AIDS, cardiovascular and severe mental health conditions, many of which are preventable. At the same time, our health is threatened by severe climate and ecological change, just as much of our sanitation infrastructure is under a huge strain with much of it collapsing and unfit for purpose. The NHS plan has called for a radical upgrade in prevention, which the government has identified as one of its three key health priorities, but it's the same cuts to the public health grant, a vital means of support for local authorities to tackle the causes of ill health, clearly run counter to it. Political leadership is needed to ensure a robust public health system is available for all, to prevent diseases and long-term conditions that reduce people's life chances and qualities of their life. This Tory government is morally bankrupt, as gruesomely shown with its hideous effect in their ideologically-driven austerity programme and commitment to the prioritisation of our health services. In my view, they are the sons and daughters of the moral monsters in Dickens' Hard Times. Dickens wrote to educate his readers at the time about the appalling living and working conditions of people's lives that led to ill health, despair, and also to engender compassion and kindness towards those in need. This government shows no leadership on public health, in fact the opposite. It's also incapable of compassion and humanity in its policymaking. It prefers instead the creation of a hostile policy environment that is killing people and deliberately keeps many in little more than a desperate state of fighting for survival. Well, we do need very urgently to address the lack of investment in our public health and social care, as has been said, and as I've tried to stress, this should not be just focused down narrowly on health needs of individuals and their behaviour, it needs to go much wider. Our government, sorry, people's health and wellbeing in this respect is not safe in this government's hands. Like smoking, they are bad for the nation's health. People in Newcastle and across the country deserve much, much better and the need for a robust, broad-based public health system is everywhere apparent. Sufficient funding of commitment and commitment to the public health is critical to any policies that we have. Please support the motion, thank you.
Thank you councillor Schofield. Councillor Williams, you expressed... Go to the vote then, please, if it's not agreed.
Can we be clear about what we're extending the guillotine for? I think if we could negotiate how we deal with that, if we want to finish discussing this motion and maybe some of the speakers might not choose to take up their opportunity on this motion, I'm happy if we can agree the just fair motion by a show of hands. I would not want to extend the guillotine beyond nine o'clock because three hours in a meeting is actually quite frankly long enough, so I just don't want to extend the guillotine without a limit.
Can I just be clear councillor McCarthy, you're asking that the guillotine does not go beyond nine o'clock and no further speakers?
Sorry, Lord Mayor, I obviously wasn't very clear. I'm suggesting that we take as few speakers as possible on this motion on public health, that we agree by vote, moving and formally seconding without a debate on the just fair motion on social and economic rights and that we have a limited debate on the climate change motion, but don't go beyond nine o'clock. I hope that's clear.
Is that agreed? All right, we will take the request from councillor Woodock to suspend standing orders. I'm just going to ask the assistant legal officer to give advice, please.
I think it would be helpful if we could clarify whether councillor McCarthy was proposing that the motion, a motion that the vote now be taken on this matter and proceed immediately to the vote. Lord Mayor, it's only a decision for yourself to decide whether you think it's been sufficient to bear that we can proceed to the vote on this matter.
Can I just put in a point that the only councillor on your side of the chamber is not here in the chamber, so I would suggest that that is possible as far as this particular motion is concerned. Okay, I can see councillor Taylor looking, I'll ask again for the legal opinion, please.
Lord Mayor, my understanding was the councillor Woodock withdrew his proposal? Lord Mayor, there seems to have been a number of motions being proposed. If councillor Woodock's motion is still at issue, then as has been said, we can vote on that first and then if that's not carried, as has been suggested, there's been an alternative way of dealing with things, which I understood from councillor McCarthy to be that a vote be taken on the current matter and that the guillotine be suspended until 9pm. So the first vote is on councillor Woodock's proposal, if it is seconded, to suspend the guillotine without limitation.
Okay, please.
Can we vote on that matter?
Yes, please vote on councillor Woodock's request to suspend standing orders. Okay, that is defeated. Can we take councillor McCarthy's?
Lord Mayor, if I understood what was said, I think the chamber agreed that if councillor Woodock's motion wasn't agreed, then they were happy to proceed with councillor McCarthy's proposal. Lord Mayor, if the opposition are indicating not, then we do need a vote.
Okay, will we go to the vote then, please, on the second? Has everyone voted? Okay.
Okay, Lord Mayor, in that case, then the next vote is to vote on the current matter, which was the notice of motion subject to the amendment. So we first need to vote on the amendment.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you councillor King, you've reserved the right to speak.
Lord Mayor, it is correct if a member has reserved the right to speak and I apologise for not picking that point up earlier.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My father John was a social worker in Newcastle for 30 years. Shortly before he... Shortly before his death, he was seconded to work on mental health first aid. Mental health first aid is a training programme that teaches members of the public how to help a person developing a mental health problem, experiencing a worsening of an existing mental health problem, or in a mental health crisis. Like traditional first aid, mental health first aid does not teach a person to treat or diagnose mental health or substance use conditions. Instead, the training teaches people how to offer initial support until appropriate professional help is received or until the crisis resolves. While first aid for physical crisis is a familiar notion in developed countries, conventional first aid training has not generally incorporated mental health problems. Sickness and absence caused by stress and mental health issues have skyrocketed at Newcastle City Council. New figures have revealed that the mental health problems were the cause of fifteen thousand sick days at the local authority in 2018, a huge increase from the thirteen thousand five hundred and ninety-nine in the previous year. Staff absences now cost the cash-strapped council around five million pounds a year. According to council figures, the average annual number of working days lost to sickness, absence is eleven point zero eight days per employee, significantly higher than the annual target of seven point three seven. It is well known that the spirit of an organisation comes from the top. There appears to be in Newcastle City Council a miasma of despair. There is a saying in Whitehall called 'doing a Newcastle'. This is basically code for saying that it is someone else's fault. 'I can't do anything unless you do it for me', or it's not going to happen. It's not surprising that this council of despair, driven by Mr Forbes, has culminated in a demoralised workforce, culminating in his own party rejecting his down-in-the-mouth leadership of our region, resulting in Jamie Driscoll and his Brexit masterclass.
Councillor King, are you actually speaking to the amendment?
Will the council now invest in new training for mental health first aid for council employees to counter this council of despair?
Councillor McCarthy, you have the right to reply, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I did want to accept councillor Taylor's amendment, but I'm appalled by the speech we've just heard, that was disgraceful. In the spirit of... If there are issues, I think that councillor ought to come and talk to someone, and we will try and share, help him understand what it is this council is trying to do. Lord Mayor, I'm disappointed that the opposition brought forward an amendment to this motion for the very reasons that councillor Taylor mentioned. This was for us to support Cancer UK, Cancer Research UK's national motion, that they are trying to get supported across the country to challenge the government. I think it's disappointing that the opposition chose tonight to amend that. If we'd wanted to bring something more generally about public health, of course, it would have included all of the issues that councillor Taylor raised. Lord Mayor, I think on this occasion we will accept the amendment in the spirit of collegiate working, although I'm very unhappy about that last contribution.
Okay, so is the amendment agreed by council? Is the amended motion agreed by council? Thank you very much, okay. Notice of motion, social rights, I call on councillor McCarthy to move this motion to be seconded by councillor Kilgore.
Lord Mayor, I'd like to move this formally, and I suggest that we move this and second it and put it straight to the vote.
Thank you. Councillor Kilgore, do you... Thank you. Do we need a vote, or is it agreed?
No, not agreed.
Okay, please, vote then, please. Could we have the bell run, please? And we need ten people to stand up for a name vote that somebody was asking. It's agenda item twelve, social rights. Please sit down councillor Stone for the moment. You may not need to say it, depending on what our legal officer says, please, thank you.
We are entitled to speak, if we wish, unless a motion is put to move to the vote. That is dependent on there being some debate.
Do we have this...
I think we need to ask for some clarity about what we actually agree with councillor McCarthy's motion. I think there is not clarity in this council chair, and we need to have that on both sides.
Lord Mayor, in terms of what was agreed, councillor McCarthy proposed that the vote was taken on the item that was currently under discussion and that the guillotine was suspended until nine o'clock. That dealt with that particular notice of motion. That doesn't apply to this current notice of motion. The administration group have proposed to move straight to the vote, but it is obviously open to the opposition members to seek to speak, in which event then there will be a need for a motion to be put that the matter should move to the vote.
Right, it needs to be moved and seconded. Okay, do we need the vote on it? Please vote on that then, please.
Lord Mayor, I think the next question then, is the notice of motion, item number twelve, agreed, or is a vote needed on it?
Now we move to item number thirteen, climate emergency. I call on councillor Taylor to move this motion to be seconded by councillor Stone.
On October the eighth, twenty eighteen, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change released a vital report on the state of climate science. They warned that if the planet warmed by one point five degrees centigrade, there would be some devastating consequences, such as the loss of most coral reefs and extreme weather such as heat waves and floods. The consequences of a two-centimetre warming would be truly catastrophic. Given that the planet is currently heading for three to four degrees warming, keeping to one point five degrees centigrade requires a radical shift across energy, land, industrial, urban and other systems to reduce emissions. Yet in the autumn budget last year, climate change was not even mentioned. In March this year, from Australia to America, children put down their books to march for change in the first global climate strike. The event was embraced in the developing nations of India and Uganda and in the Philippines and Nepal, countries acutely impacted by climate change, as tens of thousands of schoolchildren and students in more than a hundred countries went on strike, demanding the political elite urgently address what they say is a climate emergency. Now councils across the UK are declaring a climate emergency and committing to actions to protect our planet from further change, for as the motion makes clear, humans have already caused irreversible climate change, and current plans and local actions are not enough to prevent overshooting the Paris Agreement's limit of one point five degrees centigrade rise by 2050. To achieve what is needed, there has to be cooperation between local and national government, businesses, voluntary groups and local people, and we need clear measurable targets. As I said earlier, I was very proud of the Newcastle Declaration on Climate Change brought in 2010, but I'm disappointed how few of the actions have actually been achieved. To give some examples, the council's waste strategy, recently published but actually promised in 2016, makes clear that the council is near the bottom of the list of councils for collecting dry recycling at the curbside, and the council has unfortunately abandoned the long-term goal of zero waste. The declaration promised that we would ensure all new homes are built to the zero-carbon standard from 2016, that hasn't happened. We promised to ensure that every home can benefit from cavity and loft insulation has been treated by 2015, I'd like to know the figures on that. We were going to deliver low-carbon energy solutions across the city, including community-based energy schemes, solid wall insulation and renewable energy generation. Some progress certainly, but we haven't achieved any targets there. And we were going to support the city's businesses in reducing their carbon emissions by thirty-four per cent by 2020, and eradicate fuel poverty as far as practical by 2016. We were going to meet twenty per cent of our electricity demands by low-carbon energy sources by 2020. There are some targets that have been achieved. We promised to develop a science central site as the focal point for applied research and practice by the public and private sectors across the whole sustainability field. And we were going to support the development and introduction of electric vehicles across the North East, including the expansion of charging points powered by renewable energy where practical. Much of that's been achieved, largely as a result of the work done by the Liberal Democrat administration. So, certainly not Science City, wasn't, nothing to do with the Labour Government. So we need to move forward, I think the Labour administration really needs to seriously up its game and move forward with clear achievable targets to achieve the ambitious climate change goals this city needs, and to work with local partners and central government to make the changes our young people are demanding. It is a climate emergency, we need to take action.
Thank you councillor Taylor, councillor Stone?
Secondary reserve the right to speak, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Stone. We have received an amendment to this notice of motion. Can I call on councillor Kemp to move the amendment, please, seconded by councillor Driscoll?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's a shame from the pious high ground on the opposition side that we've lost a significant amount of time we could have for this debate by the ridiculous farce that ensued earlier. The climate crisis is an emergency that requires actions at all levels of government, local, regional and national. What the climate scientists tell us is what we need is to act quickly to reduce our carbon emissions. We need to achieve carbon neutrality by 2030. This is an extremely challenging but achievable goal, but this motion is not something this council should vote for lightly. We have a duty to ourselves, our residents and businesses and to the wider world to not only declare a climate emergency but to deliver real change, the hard work starts here. The recent 2018 IPCC report states that we have just twelve years to act on climate change if global temperatures rise at a kept within the recommended one point five degrees Celsius. All governments, national, regional and local, have a duty to limit the negative impacts of climate breakdown, and local governments that recognise this should not wait for their national governments to change their policies. UK cities need to commit to aggressive reduction targets and carbon neutrality as quickly as possible. Cities are well placed to lead the world in reducing carbon emissions, as their higher density opens up a range of sustainable transport buildings and energy opportunities. It's nice councillor Taylor that you're actually able to recognise some of the achievements that we've met in this city. The council has been part of the local authority energy financing scheme since 2005, and has allocated over one million pounds' worth of funding for over sixty projects with estimated lifetime savings of almost four million pounds and twenty thousand tonnes of CO2. Over recent years, we have installed one thousand and thirty-four PV systems across YHN stock and operational buildings. The systems provide free electricity for the building's users, helping to reduce electricity bills and carbon emissions. I've already noted to this chamber early the other significant steps this administration has initiated, and stated our declaration of a climate change emergency alongside the establishment of a climate change convention, which will belong to the city and allow us to work together across our great city in addressing this most significant of challenges. We believe this is essential, as this issue cannot be dealt by the city council alone, and the convention will provide the forum for other actions and plans to be developed and delivered and owned by the whole city. I appreciate many of the colleagues who wish to speak on this motion, so I won't repeat more now. But what we have seen is government stagnate in the Brexit ponder despair, and it is essential that we lobby government to secure commitment and investment to enable us to achieve these targets for our city and our future generations. I urge city council to reject the motion and accept this positive amendment.
Thank you, I understand that councillor Driscoll has reserved the right to speak.
Lord Mayor, I second the...
Oh, sorry.
I second the amendment and reserve the right to speak.
We have already accepted to go up to nine o'clock, councillor Dunn. Thank you, right, can I ask councillor Postlethwaite wished to speak still, followed by councillor Chisholm, please, be ready.
No.
Can I just ask who is seconding councillor Dunn's?
Ainsley.
What, can I just hear you say that, please councillor Ainsley? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
No, okay, can we go to the vote then, please? So you're voting on moving to voting now, but the people who have reserved the right to speak can still do so after. Okay, we have voted to move to voting straight away without any further discussion apart from those who have reserved the right to speak. So councillor Stone, would you like to speak, please?
Lord Mayor, I'm glad that we've got to this point in the proceedings, it's important that we do debate this motion the Liberal Democrat Group has brought forward. I think it is disappointing and even shameful that we've had the shenanigans we've had tonight from the party opposites, who didn't have the decency to acknowledge the importance of this issue and have the courtesy to bring forward the item on the agenda when we had a perfect opportunity to discuss it earlier on, and you've made lots of concerned citizens in this city sit through three hours of delaying tactics frankly to get to this point. It is very... It is very important...
Councillor, can I just stop you? Will all the councils please respect what is being said by one of your colleagues? If you wish to interject, I will ask you to leave the chamber. Thank you.
And I would like to commend the members of the public who have sat through for a very long time tonight to get to this point because they are clearly concerned about this issue, as are we. I think that this, this issue has been, it certainly was a priority under the previous administration. I'm not sure, it just had, the environmental sustainability and climate change has had quite the degree of prominence under the current administration. They have really not been that interested on this subject and frankly, it's taken bringing forward this climate emergency motion here tonight to actually get some sort of statement from them on this issue. I think there is a lot that the council needs to do on this issue to fulfil its responsibilities to Newcastle and to the planet as a whole. I think that councillor Taylor has touched on some of those issues. There is much we can do and we are not doing on transport. There is much that we could do and we are not doing on housing standards and on passive house. There is far better examples of good practice being carried out around the country and around Europe than is being done here in this city and we need to change that. We need to act on this faster and the rate of change that we are delivering on this is not good enough. That is the reality of the situation. I could go on at great length about the impact of climate change on our city. We have seen it already in terms of freak storm events and the frequency of major storm events and that is having an impact on our citizens, but clearly the impact going on around the world is far, far greater and it should console all of us the importance of tackling this now and a greater political priority on this than has been the case. I think there is a potential coalition of the willing in this, in this city. I would invite the party opposite to consider what they can do to join it because I don't think that's been the case so far. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Stone. Councillor Williams?
I would say very quickly we would have had more time to discuss this critical issue if the Lib Dems over there hadn't spent so much time wasting it. The Lib Dems in coalition with the Tories promised the greenest government ever. In his conference speech at the time, their then leader said nothing, not one word, not one passing nod about climate change. In 2014, the Labour group in this council brought forward a motion against fracking. The Lib Dems voted against it, saying Labour were scaremongering. In 1997, the Labour leader used his conference speech as Prime Minister to raise the whole profile of climate negotiations. If we are not scared now about the likely impacts of accelerating climate change, we're either not awake or we're dead to the future of humankind. Some of us have been saying this for years, but the recent report from the IPCC raises the warning level to a completely new and unmissable mark, even those with tin ears. It's a hard-hitting report, realistic but not without hope. The 1.5 degrees centigrade threshold must determine all policy responses. The difference between 1.5 degrees centigrade and two degrees centigrade is massive in terms of impacts on agriculture, biodiversity, sea level rises, loss of reefs, reefs and other critical ecosystems, water stress, extreme weather events and so on. We have a tonne of stuff to do. The other side of 2030, it gets so much harder to stop things spiralling out of control. Accelerating climate change will never be adequately addressed unless and until we start transforming the basic tenets of today's particular model of capitalism. We are having, we are having to negotiate the most radical, most comprehensive shift in human history at precisely the time when we're afflicted by a peculiarly vicious and reconstructed variant of capitalism. Deregulated capitalism and lowering emissions are in fundamental conflict. The actions that would give us the best chance to avert the climate crisis and benefit the vast majority are extremely threatening to the elite minority that has a stranglehold over our economy, our political process and most of our major media outlets. The conventional discourse may promise constant economic growth, but the consequences are that we risk irreversibly altering the planet's climate, driving one-third of the world's species to extinction, causing millions to die every year from air pollution and leaving us with just 60 harvests before our soils run out of fertility. The challenge is how we can meet the basic needs of all the world's people with dignity. We need an economic strategy that is compatible with the natural limits of our planet. This is respectful to other living creatures and is socially equitable. Labour's Climate Change Act was a huge achievement that pointed Britain and the world in the right direction. It was a bold step that delivered real change and was framed in such a way that it inspired other governments and indeed businesses to act. We now need to go further. We need to make Britain the global hub of a clean industrial revolution and usher in an age of one planet living.
I now call on councillor Taylor to reply.
I must say first of all that we would have had more time to debate this if Labour councillors weren't more concerned about going home than debating important issues. But we have had a good debate and I do welcome the climate change convention that councillor Kempers has mentioned and we're certainly happy to work with that. Just to say that under the coalition, the Liberal Democrats actually did a huge amount on climate change, mainly through the Department of Energy and Climate Change. We made this country the world leader in offshore wind. We introduced the Green Investment Bank. What did the Tories do? Privatised the Green Investment Bank, cut subsidies for wind and closed the Department of Energy and Climate Change. It is a disgrace that they have not taken this issue seriously. I can't accept the amendment, I'm afraid. I think it removes far too much for no obvious reason and in most importantly removes the six-month target for actually having some action. I think as soon as possible just isn't good enough. So I urge colleagues to support the motion unamended and move forward to take action on this issue.
Thank you. Can I just formally then just ask, is the amendment agreed or do we need to vote on the amendment? Okay. May you move to voting on the amendment then, please? Everyone voted? That means the amendment is carried. Can we then vote on the... Oh, I'm just being asked, is it agreed now? Agreed, okay. Thank you very much. Can I, on this last council meeting before the annual meeting of council, thank you for your patience and eventual understanding with all that was going on this evening and all that was discussed. The next meeting of council is the annual meeting on the 22nd May at 2pm. Thank you very much. Good night.